Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Here.
Mrs. Lane?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Craftcheck? Mr. Parzick?
Here.
I've been asked to read this into the record. Charles Craftcheck has requested it be noted on the record today that he is unable to attend the work session and the meeting because his father was admitted to the hospital on Sunday in Reading, Pennsylvania. And he is with him and his mother, both of who are 89 years old and are in constant need of care.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape County Herald on January 1st, 4th, 2017. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we will start the work session with public safety. Mr. Parzick?
I don't see the court administrator here, so we'll go right on to the fire department chief, Chief Stanford.
Good afternoon, all.
Roger.
We, Mike, I'll start with the August report. I'll be short and sweet here. In August, we had 38 fire calls and 82 EMS calls. And I'll just segue right into the summer report. For the summer season, June 1st to August 31st, we had 111 fire calls, 246 EMS calls. We're slightly behind 2016, and we're right on track with 2015. So, I would say we're average. The most, during the summer, we had six building fires, which that's the most we've had in a long time. Five SURF rescues, eight motor vehicle accidents, and numerous alarm calls. So I want to, I've been asked to discuss what's on your agenda tonight, the stipend change. And I'll just start by giving you a little history how we got here. For the past, or number of years with the President Public Safety Committee and the previous Public Safety Committees, we've been discussing our manpower issues with fire and EMS. I don't believe in waiting till we have a major crisis where we have to do something, but we've seen a steady decline in our manpower. The problem we have is with our EMS is our nighttime volunteers, and it's the same problem we have with our firefighters. It's our nighttime volunteers, people who live in Stone Harbor. Today, I want to address the EMS issue. And in the future, we have a change for next year's budget to our firefighter issue, which I have discussed public safety and I intend on talking with A&amp;F. Yes?
Just so you know, we discussed this at the last two Public Safety Committee meetings, these stipend modifications and a little different approach. And then Councilwoman Gallagher, Councilwoman Rich, and myself met with Roger and the fire department Thursday before last. You had about, I don't know how many people, 40 people or so in EMS, and went over some of these ideas. And what you're going to hear now is the result of those meetings and discussions. I'm sorry, Roger.
Okay. I want to discuss the EMS solution that we hopefully came up with. And as I said, the fire issue will be dealt with hopefully in January 1st, but it will be in next year's budget. So I intend on, during the budget process, we've already met a public safety meeting with A&amp;F and discussing what needs to be done for that. So, tonight, we're addressing the EMS issue. And just to give you a little history, for the past 17 years, we've provided nighttime volunteer EMS that have received a stipend for their volunteerism. We've had 20 members throughout that period. We're now down to 17, actually, last month, we had 15. We're actively recruiting new EMTs. But the reason we had the meeting with the Public Safety Committee and all the fire and EMS was to try to find out from the membership what could be done to increase people volunteering for this. I believed I had thought of every possible solution to this problem, but actually, from the floor, an idea was brought up which made perfect sense. Currently, they receive $400 for their volunteering for their nights. And that $400 is not based on a number of shifts, it's based on the fact that every shift is covered. So you may have one person who's doing four, he may be doing five, one person doing three. So it wasn't really a fair system, but it worked out well. Especially when you had 20 people, it worked out, because it usually worked out to about four shifts a month. What we're having with less people is we have more people doing more shifts and not getting compensated, so they're in turn getting upset. And, so the solution that we developed and we want to change tonight is, instead of paying the $400 per that whole month, it's $130 per shift. So therefore, the volunteer that's doing, the more volunteering gets more, as opposed to the guy that's not doing as much. It's interesting that it, it's, there's no budget increase. It's the same monthly expenditure that we're doing now, it's just the way we're administering the stipend program. So it's gotten, we had another meeting last Thursday night, and it's been, it's a very positive, everybody's very excited about this. As I said, it hasn't changed in 17 years. So it's a, it is a change, and it's a, it does benefit those people that give more, volunteer more. I think we figured it out, it's $8, $8 an hour, they figured it out. So, it's a, it definitely, it's a good solution. So, hoping that you adopt that tonight, it's just a change in our standing order.
Roger, so what you're saying is that all your EMTs are comfortable with 130, they wouldn't want a little more?
Well, right now, I figured it's not very-
Eight hours an hour doesn't seem like-
Yeah, it's not very easy, I know, to change budgets in mid-cycle. I'm not saying that we wouldn't want to increase it. We had talked, the original talk at the meeting was raising the stipend to a higher stipend, but it still doesn't benefit those people that are doing more.
No, I like the shift thing. I think that works out.
Yeah, so, right now, it, actually, the people that are doing the four shifts are actually getting a little bump, just the way it's administered. So it's, it seems like a raise when it's not really a raise from the budgeted amount.
So the people who are actually doing the work are the ones getting it, not just showing up occasionally.
Right.
It's on a more, a fairer basis.
Absolutely. It's funny, we never thought of this, and we've always believed that the stipend had to be based the way that we did it, until we see other towns, like Avalon, who just adopted their stipend program last year, where they're paying per shift. While we're adopting a volunteer program where they're going to pay per hour for volunteers. So it's, obviously, it can be done, and we, you know, we just, it's been, you know, 17 years and it's been working, so we figured, hey, why change it until this has happened? So.
Fine. Does it go through like a first go-round, and everybody picks, and nobody can actually like take them all if they want?
Right. That's what we're working through the little bugs right now. I mean, you know, dealing with 20 people and personalities, but our goal is that every single person will try to be guaranteed four shifts. Once the schedule's up and we have everybody in the room, if there's more shifts, then the people in the room can pick additional shifts. Because I don't want one guy saying, "I'm going to take 10."
Right.
You know, we're trying to make it, because obviously, once you do that, you're going to lose those people that want the time, so.
Okay.
We, I'll work through it, we'll get it through.
Okay.
Any else, questions?
Good.
One more thing to report that the council should be very happy about. We also, at that same meeting, the fire department voted to only sound the 96th Street siren 24 hours a day.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we should not-
Mine is sarcastic.
...receive any more complaints. In my 27 years as chief, I've never received one complaint about this siren, except from one person.
And the test siren? Didn't you change that as well?
The noon siren?
The noon siren will only be sounded on the 1st and 15th of the month. So you now have to remember to eat your lunch without the siren going off. That's a problem.
I'm going to miss the noon-
I want, I want to go on record, though, I want this on the record.
Right.
It may sound for structure fires, it may sound for water rescues, it may sound for all calls for ambulances. Those are the only instances when all four would, well, all three would sound. And emergency management, it will still sound emergency management, so.
Technically, they're all emergencies.
Right, but it's a-
That you need people.
And just to give you, I'm sure the council all knows, we had a fire on Sunday.
Yes.
It was a, it was a, it was a good fire.
It was a doozy.
For Stone Harbor. We, I was explaining to Ray this morning that we have in place right now a volunteer duty crew program, which we have in place for a year. And we actually had two volunteers in station for their duty crew. We had a firefighter working on the ambulance, and we had a fireman lived two blocks away. So the first engine was on the street in three minutes, which, something like that, you really want. I was on the beach, so I was, I was in town, so you can tell it's a sure town when six of us came off the beach for that call, so. But the fire was out, under control, it was basically out in three minutes, by the time our truck got there. And we were there for two hours. So that was a, for a major fire, and we had 28 firefighters respond, so.
Good. Any idea how it started?
I guess I-
I don't know.
It gets out on Facebook, so.
I don't know.
It wasn't, it wasn't-
I don't want to know something we're not supposed to know.
Now, it was a, it was a oscillating floor fan on the floor. And, yeah, I just want to pass on to anybody that cares, this is a good example of how fast fire travels, why we always tell people when your detectors go off, you need to get out right away. The person was on the porch, her back porch, heard the smoke alarm going off, came inside, the fan was on fire, catching the couch on fire.
Get down.
She yelled to her neighbor to grab a fire extinguisher, by the time the neighbor got it, the house was going. So it was very, very quick, so. But luckily, no one was hurt, there were no additional property damage, except for the building involved, so.
Wow, good job. It was big. Big and fast.
Yeah, it was, alright.
We, I, we'd like to implement this new stipend policy for the balance of the budget here, since there's no extra cost involved. So what, what do we need to do? You see, there's a draft ordinance in here?
Is there one in there?
So what?
Resolution.
There's a resolution to approve it on the, on the-
For the council meeting, there's a resolution.
And it's on the council meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
So we can do it a fourth-
And you have a copy of the standing order, which I have the signed copy for myself and Sam Weirman, so that makes that change. Alright?
Thanks, Roger. Court Administrator?
Oh, she did come.
I don't know. That must have been added.
Uh-oh. It's not in.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We're down to one quarter a month at this point, so on Thursdays, if you happen to come in, in the afternoon, it will be quite busy. Do not be surprised by people in the hallway. That's basically it, unless you have questions for me.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I know we all want to talk about this situation at the 9500 block of Third Avenue, but a couple of things I wanted to just touch on real quickly. We did, I believe we have a total of four applicants for the flood mitigation assistance grant with FEMA. I attended the open house, public session, if you will, in Ocean City last Saturday. We had probably five or six households there, so I did talk to some residents, and it appears that most of the residents that I spoke with have gone ahead and submitted applications. I pounded into their heads that there is no guarantee that this is going to be approved by FEMA. We were able to get Tetra Tech to lower their cost per application down to $1,200, which is paid solely by the homeowner. There's no tax dollars involved in this whatsoever. It is going to require some assistance from borough staff here, myself, Jill, and Kim, kind of helping to get the applications in, they're all submitted, and there's going to be some legwork there involved, I'm hoping it's not too much. But if we can get these final SRL properties raised and mitigate some flooding there, I think that's a good thing. Real quickly, we have Jose we're dealing with right now. We are currently under a flood warning till 1:00 a.m. We have high tide tonight, I believe is at 8:30. Not expecting anything crazy, I think right now the prediction is around seven feet. So, we will have some flooding in the streets tonight. I believe Public Works is already ready to deal with the 9500 block, I have seen some barriers out there. Next up is Maria. We're not quite sure what she's going to do yet, but we are keeping a close eye on it. The models are starting to kind of sort of come into agreement that it will head out to sea behind Jose. We're not sure, we're keeping an eye on it, trying to keep everybody as informed as possible through social media. So on to the 9500 block situation. I do have some pictures here, if I could just give these to members of council, if you want to. Just what we're talking about here, this is another option, if you just want to pass them down.
Here, pass this down.
I have spent hours far and wide on the internet looking for alternative solutions. Everything from the strips that can pull out like you see at a movie theater, other types of accordion barricades, things of that nature. I really think if we are going to do anything that is permanent, if you will, until we find a, you know, a long-term solution, which we're, most of us are aware of, I think this is the best option, other than what we are currently doing. You're looking at a price point of around $1,300 to $1,400 per gate, maybe a little more, and they're surface-mounted, so it wouldn't really be a problem for Public Works to install these. I did speak with Dale Foster at the county concerning the situation. He said the county would not have any issue with us installing these gates, however, they would require the freeholders to pass a resolution allowing the borough to close the roadway whenever we see fit. I know we do it now under emergencies circumstances, when, you know, flooding requires it, but I think if we're going to do something like this, they are going to want a resolution, which he didn't seem to think would be a problem. Again, I looked at all kinds of other options, you know, scissor-type gates that we can pull out, but again, those all require someone from Public Works or the police department getting them, bringing them out, and it kind of defeats the purpose of what we're trying to do with this rapid deployment, where we can literally, water comes up, put the road closed, gates down, and be done with it. We don't have to pay a police officer or someone from Public Works overtime in the middle of the night to come out and do this. I do know we have at least two of our business owners here that are affected by this, so I'm not sure if council wants to hear from them, but.
The one question that I would have is from Grant, what we were just talking about, that you and I were talking about, is, is there a problem with the drains on Third Avenue or not?
Is that there?
Yeah, they closed off, are they not functioning? Is there something there?
I mean, they're functioning really good.
Okay.
I did, I did speak with one of the business owners there, and he said to me that he's never seen those drain work in 30-
That's, yeah, that's why I'm asking.
-30 years, and I, I mean, I walked-
I don't understand how the drains work.
Right, that's what I want to know, if you could tell us.
Grant, do you want to come to the podium?
Yeah.
And tell everybody, if you don't mind? We discussed this in Public Works in depth on-
Because there's at least one shop owner who's under the impression that the drains aren't functioning.
It was also discussed in Public Safety, this subject.
So just how, they're functioning properly?
Yes.
Okay.
What you have there is you have what's called a crossover. There's drains in all four corners. It drains from the 200 block into the 300 block, from the 300 block, it bubbles up underneath Third Avenue, comes up through the drains on the, on the west side of Third Avenue, and then continues down to the bay. That's how a bubble system works. If you think there's water sitting in the, in the drains, that's what happens, there's, there's caissons, there's not caissons, but there's, there's vaults in the ground that hold a certain amount of water. That water will not move unless the gravity from, and water coming from the 200 block pushes it out. So there's always going to be water sitting in the drains until it dries out, so.
There's no clogs, there's no malfunctions?
No.
Who maintains the drains there?
We do.
Public Works. We, not county.
It's county, but we take care of it.
Because?
We clean them twice a year.
Yeah, no, the-
Because-
Are we doing it because maybe the county doesn't do it, or we're just doing-
I'm not going to-
Right, I'm just curious, because I think it's, I'm glad that we do.
We clean them because we know that, especially on the 95th Street 300 block, there's a lot of sycamore trees that clog the drains, and they continuously need to be cleaned out.
And we've done this for years, it's been a hands-on project with Public Works to make sure it's done, not that the county wouldn't do it correctly, but that he can see it himself and say, "I know it's done correctly, because we've done it."
The vaults themselves are only going to take small material, dead leaves, sand, small debris. That accumulates in the vault, it doesn't accumulate in the piping system. And then we go out and we flush out the pipe for any small amounts that may linger, and then we clean the vaults out twice a year, so. And we'll clean them out if we have heavy storms and we know that there is some debris in the, in the drains. But the way the system works, it's, it doesn't take the water in and then just disappear into other piping system. It's, it's considered a bubble-up system, and gravity takes it to where it is.
Okay.
You'll always see water sitting in it after a storm, to a certain degree, until it dries out.
Now, is this what the pump at 93rd and 2nd is supposed to be mitigating what's happening there, correct?
That's correct, because it's, once the lower basin, water reaches that height, and it comes up and flows down the street, you know, it goes to the bay or to the next set of basins that pick it up and put into an outfall. With the pump station, these quote-unquote bubbler basins will be now piped to a main pipe in Third Avenue, plus the borough streets that go from the ocean to the bay, and those will all lead to the pump station.
But it will go to 96th Street? It will help 96th Street and Third Avenue?
Yes.
It's supposed to be 93rd to 99th?
The pump station is going from 9, will drain from 99th to 89th.
Yeah. So how does that do 96th?
Okay.
You also understand that the way it works right now, with the standing water that may be in the street after a rain event, if it's a high tide, it's not going to go anywhere. Because we have what's called a duck bill on the end of every outfall pipe that closes when you have the pressure of the tide forcing against it. Until that tide recedes below the level of the duck bill, it's not going to push itself out. Gravity will cause that to happen, so. Like tonight's, night's event, it's going to be a, it's going to be a flood event on the bayside, and-
There's going to be water there on the street?
There'll be water.
There'll be water there tonight?
If we get rain at the same time, we will, you will see standing water, until tide goes out.
Judy, do we know how many of the shops along the affected area have floodgates?
I do not know. You might want to ask construction or zoning.
Judy, JT had said the freeholders are willing to pass a resolution.
I, I can't speak for the freeholders, but-
No, you said willing, no?
Well, when I spoke with Dale, he didn't seem to think it would be an issue.
Okay.
I mean, I can't speak for what the freeholders are going to say or aren't going to say, but it definitely would require their approval, as per Dale Foster.
Well, my concern is, and I think it should be either you and JT and Grant, the terminology that we would want put in there as to how we would close that, when we were able to close it, at will. So there should be some kind of terminology that should be passed to, is Dale passing it to the freeholders, or?
I'm going to wait to see if council wants to move forward with it, and then we'll, you know, we'll go from there. I, I wouldn't want too many specifics attached to it.
No, just timeframe, like, are we allowed to do it at will?
That's what we're going to ask for, because we, we don't need, I don't want to have to call the county when it starts raining and say that, you know, do we need approval? No, and I think they'll understand that, that this is for more flash-type flooding situations.
Exactly.
Yeah, this wording would be more like when warranted.
Exactly.
Conditions. But I think, like Joan said, we, you talked about this in Public Works, we've talked about this in Public Safety, I think we've talked about it here before, in a work session. I, I'm not sure if we did. But, we've talked about putting the OEM trucks out there to block the road, we've talked about letting the police department continue to block the road. Roger had the idea of we put signs up, "Road closed," instead of "Road flooded."
Yes.
And then we have the barricades that Public Works deploys, all of which is a lot of manpower, and you can't do it quickly. I still look at this, I know some, some people may consider them unsightly, these don't look that bad to me, I mean, I still consider this a temporary, as Ray said, once we finish this first phase of flood mitigation, we shouldn't have this problem at that location any longer. We can take these things down at that point. So we're looking at them for a couple of years. The chief is here, these are very easily dropped down, road closed, done. You know, one police officer can do it, when warranted. So, I mean, I think it's something we, we should consider.
My question at the meeting that we had at Public Safety was, I'm not agreeing or disagreeing, there are other Third Avenue properties that do get flooding.
That, that is true, but the properties that are, we're really talking about preventing motor vehicles from driving through standing water, which we all know is not a good idea to begin with. But, if you have equal amount of flooding all along, let's just say, the block, one block to the north and one block to the south, it's the block to the north where it affects businesses the most, and, because they are so low, they sit so low. Most of the other business, the water would be so high that I would, any vehicles driving through, but I see, I do understand your point.
Yes, I agree and disagree.
So there has to be consideration for other businesses, I just don't know how much of a problem it is at those businesses, as opposed to the ones that we're more specifically talking about in the 9500 block up Third Avenue.
Yeah, well, from 99th Street down, there's many times that that floods, and those waves are, the people are doing the same thing down there, it'll go right to the at-home shop, it goes right to all the other businesses, it does happen down there, exactly the way it happens at this end. Different times, maybe, but, I mean-
I feel like down there, I see, you can actually see more of an incline of the businesses, it actually, there's an actual incline in the 9600 block, even 9700 block.
On the west side, but on the east side, you have that restaurant right on the corner where the church is, that's very low.
Yeah.
I can't, I can't believe that they don't have problems.
I mean, well, we don't, I don't hear, does anybody hear from any merchants over there?
No, but that doesn't mean they don't flood.
No, I'm just asking, does anybody hear from, from those merchants?
Because at-home, at-home shop has a floodgate, and they put it there because the waves, I mean-
Is it the at-home shop? Aren't you going up a couple steps to that?
Yeah, but they've still got water. They, I mean-
If they're getting water up there, I mean, aren't we a couple of feet?
They have in the past, they have.
Well, I, I think, though, that-
So what I'm saying is, why aren't we addressing the whole Third Avenue thing, instead of one section? Because we don't know, we're not going to be awake in the, in the middle of the night when cars, nobody's going to be there anyway, in the middle of the night when the cars are going by anyway, except the police and-
But isn't, isn't the extreme problem area 95th to 96th?
Yes.
Absolutely.
They're the most affected, and I think if we start to do all the Third Avenue, now we got to do the cross streets, again, because you can't have people going up 98th, 97th, 99th, and turning on. Now you're starting to block an entire, you know, the whole downtown section, as opposed to one street, so. And, and, and if it turns out going forward that that is a problem, we can, we can always revisit this situation.
At that point, you're just pushing all the traffic that comes into town up to Second Avenue. I mean, that's really what you would be doing at that point, so.
A lot of the water comes from the trucks, that are going at excessive speed down Third Avenue.
Well, the, the biggest problem we had with this was during dredging, because all of the dump trucks seemed to only know one way, and they drove down Third Avenue, and literally were pushing a very, very large wake. But I, I've stood there, I've stood in front of the businesses and yelled at people as they drive, because they think you have to drive as fast as possible through standing water, and it just makes the situation that much worse. And I've seen the business come lapping into the businesses. Yes, putting up their little wooden floodgates mitigates a decent amount of it, but the business owners aren't always there to do that. So I think that's why we're exploring this, exploring this option.
And I think we should do whatever is possible to help the business owners down there. I mean, when it floods like that, if they put the gates up, then they can't, they don't have customers because you can't go in.
Well, if it's flooded, they can't get in anyway.
If the sidewalk is flooded, nobody's shopping.
Well, that's not necessarily true. The way that sidewalk is sloped, and I've seen it firsthand for myself, especially when we had that rain event, I believe it was in July, where we had two or three inches of rain. The sidewalk comes up enough that people can absolutely walk around there and still get into the shops while the street is flooded. So I, I have seen it.
Where the stores actually remain open?
Stores can remain open, yes. I, I, I've seen it, so, uh, I saw it during that rain event that we had, which again is a perfect example of why this, I think council's exploring this.
Have we done, um, a real study? In other words, have we, instead of just taking one block and doing it, have we waited for a storm, perhaps like the one tonight, and actually taken measurements of, are there any other blocks in the borough that get that kind of weight?
I just think for most of the people that have lived here a long time, we just, I've, I've kinda come to know what's what. Um, and I know, I live in that area. I know when my street floods, I know I'm gonna have to park my cars on my driveway tonight. I just, you know, we just kinda come to know, and, and the ninety-five-hundred block has been a problem for a long time. And my family owns a business in the ninety-seven-hundred block of Third Avenue, so obviously if I, I want this to be a, a, a positive thing for everybody. But I, based on all of that, I just know that the ninety-five-hundred block, it needs, if we're gonna do it at the area that needs the most attention right now, could change in the future, um, but just looking at it now, it's the lowest lying area. It gets the most traffic and those businesses sit low.
If, if, regardless of what we, we plan to do long-term, long-term hopefully we're not gonna have this issue down there, but if we block off ninety-fifth to ninety-sixth right now and decide later we have to do more, we're still gonna use these two gates. It's not like we're throwing any money away. I mean, I think we ought to address this issue now, help these business owners out, and then see if we need to do things moving forward. But at least it'll take care of this problem. It'll take care of the manpower that's required and it'll help these businesses out, and it is low there. And then, you know, if we wanna measure water and we can do that later.
It also prevents damage to our vehicles, because these are our police vehicles that are sitting in this saltwater a lot of times and...
How are these gates, how are these gates operated? Are they operated remotely?
They're manual. You literally pull a pin out, the gate goes down. They're all, they have counterweights on them. Um, you pull a pin out, they go down, they, they, they're just like operated like the bridge, the gates at the drawbridge, however, they're manually operated.
So someone has to come out and do it?
Yes, would most likely be a police officer, drive over, walk over, pull, gate goes down, problem solved.
JT, this is your choice?
Well, I actually just found a newer one. The problem with that gate is the, the furthest, the widest it could be is twelve feet without putting a stanchion in the middle of the street, which obviously isn't an option, but I just found another one recently where it actually has a pylon that will come down with it. And that's in the...
It kinda dangles off the end.
Exactly, it's a pylon that comes down with it.
So this, this part would be permanent?
Yes.
And then this would swing down here?
It swings up.
Side by side?
It swings straight up in the air, yes.
How tall is that?
Well, the gate, it would be twelve feet, that one would be twelve feet from the point of where they, you know, where it intersects the, yes.
My question about the other businesses primarily comes from the fact that I have been serving as the chamber liaison for more than a year now, and it's never come up. No one has ever brought that up.
Brought the flooding up?
Yes.
They probably just circumvented Chamber because they called the mayor and I in the middle of the night.
And I know that Grant's been grappling this for years, literally for years.
We've been dealing with this for quite some time.
Grant, I know that he's been...
Mayor, um, Charles had asked that I, um, express his thoughts to the rest of council on the discussion. If you don't mind, I'll just read that if you don't have a... I support closure of these roads during the flooding events to help protect the affected businesses from further water intrusion from passing motorists which cause waves. Until we have a more permanent solution to this recurring problem by way of our longer term flood mitigation plan, I support installing automatic lane closure devices that can be activated and deployed quickly and efficiently by our police force, which is on patrol twenty-four seven. To rely on our public works and fire departments is a less efficient means of managing the closure of these streets. And further, I feel that doing the same with fire trucks can look rather alarming and uninviting to visitors to Stone Harbor.
So this would be on the west side of ninety-fifth Street?
There would be a total of zero-four gates. We'd have one...
Four?
Well, we have to block it on the other side as well. I don't think just blocking...
Drive around?
I just, I don't think just blocking one lane would be sufficient. However, with the newer gates that I just found recently, the arm could be longer, but then you worry about overhead utility issues and that's why I think that might be an issue, so.
So there'd be...
That's correct. And you would have some gap in between and that could probably be secured with some type of lightweight chain or something like that. And then if necessary, hang a "Road closed" sign on it, you know, whatever, again.
Couple of hawks with "Road closed," then it's done, you know?
There's not a whole lot of space on those sidewalks. How wide are these bases?
It, the footprint of it is, it's about like that. It's literally four bolts. They don't weigh much. The one system's made of aluminum, it, 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 there's not a lot of weight there.
No, I'm just talking about the, the ta, the footprint of it, that it takes up a lot of space and those are already filled with so many different things. I know when we walked it during the pole incident, there wasn't a lot of space for anything on these sidewalks.
This says it's six by six.
Six inches by six inches?
Yes.
That sounds about right.
By thirty-eight inches.
The one issue you'll have to consider is the counterweight that comes off the, the other side, but I don't, again, I don't think that that's gonna be that much of an issue, because now you're also talking, these are gonna be out when, for the most part, other than the times when the businesses are open, the streets are gonna be flooded. So I don't know how much foot traffic you're gonna have in that area.
And then theoretically removed in two years, right, Ray?
Buddy, when you put something in, you don't ever take it out.
Yeah, once it's down, it stays.
You don't ever get it out.
And again, to remove them, you're talking about on, you know, unscrewing something from the concrete. You fill the holes and that's it. So, but that's, that's Grant's department.
Okay, so what, what's everyone's pleasure? What would you like to do?
I think we should move forward with it. I think it's a, I think it's a relatively easy, it's an easy solution to the problem and then it's easily removed when the problem's solved in a couple of years, hopefully when the problem's solved. And I, I like, I really like the easy deployment. It's one policeman, go buy in a car and put it down when the chief tells him to.
And they're about thirteen hundred and fifty dollars.
The twelve-foot gates were around, yeah, they're over, a little over thirteen hundred dollars. Um, the other system, I have a call to them, I haven't heard back. It's generally the same design, I couldn't imagine it being too much more. As soon as I hear back from that one, I'll let you know. Again, that, those gates could be a little bit longer because they have the pylons, but, you know, there's some, other, could be other concerns with that while it's up, it could blow around in the wind, what have you, but, uh, I think the two twelve-footers with a chain across might be sufficient.
So you need four of them?
We would need four of them, that's correct. Unless council feels that only blocking the one side of the street would be enough.
People, cars would go right around it.
Well, that, yes and no. I mean, if you do have a "Road closed" sign on it, maybe not. I don't know.
Yeah, but, but for, but for twenty-six hundred dollars, make sure they don't go around.
It would be better to have it.
That's true.
You're talking about fifty-five hundred dollars, that's all.
Close to six thousand dollars, so.
Has anybody gone and looked on the corners to see where these would be, where these would fit the best? No?
JT, have you, um, talked to any of your counterparts in any of the other, um, shore communities? Who, and these people, I'm sure, get phone calls in the middle of the night, as you say you do, from businesses, which is, I'm not sure that businesses are open in the middle of the night.
Business owners, they have my phone number, I assure you.
So they call you in the middle of the night?
Yes.
Okay, well, anyway, have you found out what they do? Is it all, do they all use the...
I am not aware of anybody else that uses this. I'm not, I'm not really in tune with the nuances of the Borough of Avalon's business district or Sea Isle. I don't really know that they have a similar problem. Uh, you know, I concern myself with, with Stone Harbor, so I'm just not, I'm not aware. Uh, I don't know. I do know a lot of towns that are forced to close roads and probably deal with similar issues where they have to pay their public works people overtime or their police overtime to deploy signage, so. But I'm not aware of any other towns. It's not to say it doesn't happen, though.
So, you wanna move forward with it, do you not?
I'd like to move forward with it, with Ray. I certainly would.
So have you, you have two, two ideas here, which one do...
These are the two. I'm wait, again, I'm waiting to get a price on the other one and I can talk with Grant and see what Grant's feelings are on them. This is just conceptually, this is what, whether we go with this exact model or whichever the length we go with, whatever we decide to do, if we can, if we have enough room overhead, they make one that's thirty feet long that would clo, so. I mean, again, there's, those are things that, you know, Public Works can look at and, and whatnot, but as far as the county, it appears that we're okay with it. It's really up to council and I believe that this is the best option. If anybody has any other options, I, I mean, I would love to hear them, but for what we need, for what we're dealing with, in my opinion, but I'm only one person.
I'm not, I'm not against that we have to do something. I just wanna make sure that Grant and their place where, there's not a lot of room in those corners, so I'm trying to visualize...
Sure, there's actually more room than you would think. There's utility poles on each corner.
Are you going on the corner corner? Or are you going inside the corner?
No, no, you would, you would be in from the corner. If you draw an imagines, you have a round curb, you draw an imaginary line. It would be pretty much where the round curb deviates from the straight line going forward, so. And again, those are things that I can discuss with, with Grant and get his professional opinion. Grant might look at it and think it's not doable, but from what I've looked at, it appears very doable.
I'm willing to listen to the idea of moving forward, but finding out where it's gonna be placed, which one it's gonna be, um, before we go and say, you know, I just think there's a little more homework here. I think, I understand it. Lived here my whole life, I understand flooding. If anybody doesn't think that, I do, and I understand businesses flooding too. But I just, and I, and I know that you brought this to Public Safety, we chatted about it, and I, and I think it's a solution and it maybe it is the only solution. I just think we have to go eye them up and see where you're putting them, when where the big lovely poles are that go down ninety-fifth Street.
So could you do that with Grant and then come back to this council with the ones you finally recommend?
Do you want them to pick the specific product? Get the specific product where you put it?
And then give everybody the copies so we can all imagine it, because I'm trying to imagine it.
And if you can...
I don't think you're gonna notice it, I really don't.
Well, I'm not gonna be a midnight.
You don't notice the ones at the bridge and so...
And then could we, could we do that as a resolution next time or is, or do we have to wait another month to get...
Well, how long's it take to get them?
I don't know that you need a resolution for that.
The, the one company is located in Arizona, it shouldn't be a problem. I wouldn't imagine it would take too long.
Um, the clerk is saying we would need a motion to go forward.
Once you have a plan.
Once we have a plan. So you want JT to get more specific on his plan as far as the product with Grant, as far as the product itself and the placement of it?
Take pictures of the corners.
And take pictures of the corners.
Not a problem there.
That's what Sue said. That wasn't my idea, that's what Sue said.
Somebody gonna make that.
Okay, we'll look at details.
Next time.
Okay.
Okay.
Good job.
Next work session?
Thank you.
Do you want that at the next work session, Mr. Public Safety Chair?
Yes, yeah, I want it, yes.
Okay.
Hurricane season now, we're in, we're in...
Okay.
We are.
Sooner than later.
All right, thank you.
Next is, um, Captain Basaco, the, uh...
Look at Tom, he was poised.
Shut up, shut up.
Police chief doesn't have an agenda.
He always has an agenda, shut his god energy.
Shut his first.
You should wanna listen to this anyway.
Good afternoon. Uh, I'm, I'm pleased to report another safe summer. Uh, the beaches were very crowded this summer, uh, and I, I think as crowded as they've ever been. I can't recall a, a busier summer for the guards and taggers. During this summer, we had twenty-seven rescues, eleven EMS calls, three police calls, and sixteen lost children were found. I wanna commend the guards and the lieutenants on a job well done. Towards the end of the year, many of them work, uh, seven days a week just so we can, uh, keep more beaches open. They're very committed. And I also wanna thank the police department and, and, um, the fire and EMS for all of their assistance. They're always very quick to respond and very professional. And I also wanna thank all of you for your support throughout this year. It's very important for our success. And that's my report.
Thank you, Sandy.
We're gonna have a, you wanna have a discussion now about tents on the beach? We've talked about tents on the beach for nine months or so.
We can? Does everyone wanna have a discussion on tents at this time?
Probably, but I do.
Um, that, you know, well, to repeat myself, we, it's, we've been talking about this since before I was on council.
A year.
About the tents on the beach, and we've talked about it several times since. Um, we've talked about it in Public Safety, um, had discussions with the police chief, and, uh, you know, I think some of us are, uh, feel strongly that these tents are a nuisance and should be banned. Uh, and, and I've thought about this long and hard, uh, and I, I can't see these tents as being a public safety issue. I, I really can't. I, um, a nuisance, yes, maybe unsightly, yes. Do we wanna go as far as banning them? I, I don't think I, I don't think I, well, I know, I can't support the banning of the tents. Um, if we want to, um, restrict some of the usage, uh, I think maybe we wanna do that. I think maybe we wanna restrict them to within whatever number of feet from the dune line, thirty feet or forty feet, so they're backed by the dunes. Do we wanna say that they have to be open-sided? You can't have enclosed structures on the beach. I can support that. If you wanna have them fifteen feet apart, I can support that. I'll even go so far as, you know, if we, if we wanna try to impede, uh, people using them on the beach, uh, don't laugh at this, have a tent tag, twenty-five dollar tent tag, just like you buy your beach tag. You gotta buy a tag to put your tent up because you're taking up more of the beach. Put your tag on the tent and you're good for the day or the week, whatever you decide you wanna do. But I think banning them is just, at this point, um, you know, if we have, if we have improper behavior going on, do we have the beach captains to call the police department and enforce the drinking and the, uh, the, uh, I don't know what you wanna call it, excessive partying or bad behavior, you know? I mean, that's how I feel about it, so.
Sandy, from your point of view, is it a safety issue?
I, I think it's more just an aesthetics thing. It's not really, uh, that big of a safety issue. I don't think they should be connecting and taking up forty feet of beach. That is a problem and it's not considered of the other people on the beach. You can, they can't move around, they don't have a, a deed for that piece of beach for the day, where they can take up forty by twelve feet. Um, but it's more of a, uh, I don't think it's as much a safety issue, any more than an umbrella, say, in a, in a, in a strong wind. They would be just as much of an issue.
Have you actually seen more than one or two tents together during the beach season?
It's pretty frequent.
Have you seen it?
Yes.
You have, how many did you see, do you know?
I've counted up to seven, in a...
In a row?
In a square of...
In a square.
Most of them aren't like that.
No.
But they're, you'll, you'll see it pretty, you know, pretty much every day in the middle of the summer. Three or four in a row, two in a row, you know?
I, I agree with Ray. Um, of course, like all of us, we're at the beach a lot during the summertime. Um, I look north, north, I look south. All, every time I was there, I'd see maybe one here, two blocks down you'd see one, maybe three blocks down to the south you'd see one. Um, my biggest concern for that is the health reasons for it. There are a lot of people that cannot be in the sun, direct sun. It's a great protection for people that are, uh, have cancer but still can go to the beach for young children to take their naps in. It's a deterrent for the seagulls that they don't actually come under there, so the little ones can eat their lunch without being pecked to death. Um, I don't see any problem with them whatsoever. There was a time, probably two weeks in, beginning of July, I think ninety-fifth, ninety-fourth Street, you might have seen quite a few there, and it was like for a two-week time period. Other than that, and that, on the south end from ninety-fifth down, I really didn't, didn't see a problem with them whatsoever. So my thought would be to, I don't think we should have a tag to charge extra. I mean, it's supposed to be a free beach, it's supposed to, I mean, they pay their beach tag. If, if there were that many unruly, uh, the police and, I'm sure... unruly, the police and I'm sure you take care of it, but in my opinion, I really haven't seen that. So, mine is for the health part of it, the fun part of it. And I think we should just monitor it. If it comes back again next year and you feel there's an increase or that more is going on than we anticipated, I have never seen one down there, and maybe I'm in the wrong area, with closed flaps and a zipper. They've all been open. Mainly, I call it more a tent canopy than I, to me, a tent is closed up with a zipper. Have you seen any where they hang their laundry and their towels and their bathing suits? No, I have not. But I've seen people on their decks in Stone Harbor with beach tags hanging down. This is the beach. And I have photographs of it. And how many did you see?
May I say, whoa.
I'll tell them that up and give it to you, Joe.
So, Mantora, we, just so everybody gets an opportunity to talk and Mantora can then give her opinion?
If we postponed it another year, that was our decision last year when we saw the problem. And it's my understanding that we already have an ordinance that says no picnicking and no alcohol. So, if we're going to continue to allow tents on the beach, I believe that we need to completely remove the ordinance for alcohol and for picnicking because there is alcohol. They're coming with coolers this big and unless they're filled with two-foot hoagies, they're.
Well, I think it's addressed. When you see alcohol, it's addressed.
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah, I don't know. I think the alcohol is, it's not just connected with the tents.
How about the buffet tables?
Sometimes under a tent, sometimes not. I think they're all, they're all the same thing, but I don't know if they actually are connected with the tents per se.
Well, I look at it this way. I don't think that Stone Harbor's image is one that fosters a carnival atmosphere on the beach. And that's exactly what it is when you see tent after tent after tent and towels and bathing suits and coolers and tables and furniture under the tents. As one council member said once before, these people are buying a beach tag. They're not buying a deed. So, they don't own part of the beach. So, I think it's been taken to another level, but the interesting thing is that other places in New Jersey and surrounding states have banned these tents. All of those places that banned them this year are going to have people leaving those beaches and coming to other beaches. So, we're going to have even more next year. So, we have more this year than we had last year and next year we will have more.
Josie?
If we ban them.
Well, let's move to Josie because we're going to run out of time. So, everybody gets their opinion across. Josie?
First of all, I think we should all be very, very proud that what we have and the ordinances that we presently have are keeping our beach probably the best on the whole state. Last year was the first time that I think, I mean, you can say yes or no, that we've had a complaint about what was going on on the beach. There were complaints last year. It was brought to us. We decided not to do anything and wait till this year. Yeah, we did have complaints last year.
No, I'm saying not deciding to do anything. We sent the cops down for all the complaints. We were getting complaints of alcohol on the beach and we sent cops down. So, we definitely address complaints. Okay.
I'm talking about tents. The tents appeared, not this summer, last summer, in more of a quantity than in the past. Is that correct? Sort of. I mean, it seems to be the new thing is to go buy a tent, bring it, pack it, put it on the beach. We have been really, really, really successful for, I don't want to say fifty years prior to that, to providing shade with umbrellas. Now, we have to have a different item to provide shade. And, and if we shouldn't be in the sun, that is our personal choice of how to shade our bodies. There's lots of ways. You don't have to have a tent to shade your body. And if anybody goes down and watches the shade under an umbrella, just like under a tent, it shifts. So, by the time the sun is in a certain way, some of, there's no shade even under some of those tents because it has all moved. So, now we've got ten by ten and we've got ten by ten over here. I personally agree that they are, will become a nuisance. I would say they are a nuisance now. It's much easier in a windstorm to pull down an umbrella, which I know that they can be dangerous, than it is to take down a tent. I don't think our beaches are big enough in some places to have them. I agree that it might not be public safety, but the feeling of having a tailgating party or camping on the beach is what that, in my mind, is setting us up for. And I agree with, if we don't, if we don't do something about it, we will become tent city. Whoever does not address these next year, and I saw Sea Isle is addressing them. I don't know whether for or against them, but a lot of communities are addressing them and I don't think they belong on our beach. Karen?
I'm, I'm right here, Ray. I'm right here.
I know. We agree to the.
I can see both sides of this. And I do think that we probably would be negligent if we didn't take some steps to ensure that we don't become the parking lot at the link with the tailgating. I have received and people have come up to me and shown me pictures of a tent where actually with a hammer, they're putting sides all around it, bringing in tables. I am totally amazed. I mean, we always went to the beach with a blanket and a towel. They have carts bigger than grocery carts going to the beach. Fine, if that's what you want to do. But I think we're remiss if we don't now, before it becomes a bigger issue, do something. And I think I will concur with Ray. I don't think we can really stop the tents, but I think we can stop them from joining together. There must be feet between them. They must be only a certain size. They can have no sides. This, this person was building walls around his tent. How difficult is something like that for you because you're supposed to be eyes front?
You can't do that.
How can you monitor tents if we say, okay, you can have a ten by ten tent and there has to be X amount of space between the tents so that they can't join them? Can your guards monitor that?
The enforcement's going to be an issue.
It would be, it would be a bit much to try and handle that. That is the other side of this whole thing is the chief mentioned in the, in the public safety meeting is the enforcement. You know, how realistic are we going to have fifteen-year-old beach taggers handling this or guards leaving the stand? There, I don't want, I don't want the guards to ever not be primarily focused on the water. You know, that really is their main job. So, it could be something in the first year. It has to be enforced a little more aggressively because it would be something new. I don't know. It would just.
Well, I think, I, I think, you know, and in the first year, I don't expect beach taggers to, to go up and confront anyone, but if they see, if they see a canopy with sides on it, that's easily seen. If you see one that appears to be too close together. I hate to do this, chief, but, you know, you're, they can let your guys know and call the police chief. They can get down and take a look at it.
And the beach.
Particularly if somebody's misbehaving at the same time.
But that's not.
The enforcement's going to be very difficult. The enforcement and the ordinance as they exist are extremely difficult for the beach patrol.
Yeah.
And I mean, I'm, I'm on the Ninety-Fifth Street beach constantly. That's the most crowded beach there is. And I think before beach replenishment, everybody seemed on top of one another. I think the beach replenishment kind of changed the landscape. And I personally don't see a problem with the tents. I look underneath them to see who's there. I'm seeing families. I'm seeing baby coaches. I'm not seeing tailgating going on. And then sometimes you just, when you get into like who's got the deed on the beach, I counted the other day, a group of twenty-five people. They didn't have a tent. They didn't have an umbrella. They had a big piece of beach and it was just twenty-five and they were lined up and they had their claimed area. So, I don't know that it's just the tents claiming the beach. You've got people playing games claiming the beach. So, I mean, I think the enforcement, like I said, it becomes what they call a paper tiger. It's really difficult to enforce.
And I don't see the difference between ten umbrellas in a, in a row, which are projectiles at any time. A tent is there, or a canopy, I like to call it. It does not move. If you have, I'm sorry, my children have them. It does not move. So, when you have those projectiles, you're trying to chase it or get away from it. To me, that's dangerous. Under these tents and everybody avoided the health thing, but it's for the safety of somebody that can enjoy our beach, that perhaps has a problem, or the babies or the children. And yes, they come as families. They might have ten people under there. They're not boozing it up. There's no booze. And the beer, excuse me for a minute. I'm speaking about what I am. The, the beach tagger comes under the tent and checks all our beach tags. They're there. It's not a problem.
Well, in the interest of time, again, what do we want to do? Continue to discuss and get some kind of an ordinance? Shelve it?
Do you want Charles's? Oh, yeah. Charles, you need Charles's. I'll do a quick second. After personally walking the beaches during peak hours of enjoyment this summer on numerous weekends and holidays, as well as random weekdays, I have not seen that there is any issue with regard to the use of tents that is of any significance at this time that is worthy of regulation. I have had the opportunity to speak with a few beachgoers whom utilized tents regularly and found that the reasons for these use range from limiting exposure to UV rays from the sun to their families, especially very young children and elderly. In these situations, the tents seem to offer a more complete protection from the sun and its harmful effects. I also found that some tents were being used to celebrate a family member's birthday celebration and afforded a better environment in which to do so, given the beach environment. As long as the tents were properly fastened into the sand, I did not see them to be of any safety concern. The same goes for standard umbrellas. Finally, I did not witness so many tents, so many tents that they were overwhelming our beaches. In fact, they were very few and far between even during Peach Peak ti, Peach, Peak Beach times. The most I had witnessed at any given time on our entire stretch was four tents. For the reasons above, I am very reluctant to pursue regulation of tents on our beaches. Furthermore, if it is the party atmosphere that tents may promote, that is of concern. I feel that we have ordinances regarding noise and consumption of alcoholic beverages that are able to deal with these particular situations.
I don't, I don't want to use the words "we watch it" again, but if it, if it becomes an issue, I, I think to ban them right now, we're, we're overreacting to some complaints. I, I just think we're, we're pushing the button way too soon. If they definitely become a problem, we can address it next year or the year after, or finally the year that we all come in here and say, oh, my God, we got to do something about these tents. I know you don't want to wait till it gets to that point, but I think we're a little bit premature here. And as far as the food on the beaches, you know, we've got snack bars up and down the beach. We've got businesses serving food on the beach. So, now we're going to tell people that go to the beach, not so fast, what's in that cooler. You know, if you, if you start to try to want to limit the size of a cooler, they're just going to bring two coolers. I mean, if, if, if there's a problem occurring on the beach or a bunch of people who are not behaving the way we would like to see them behave and are blatantly breaking our ordinances, that's where the police department comes in. That's what the ordinance are there. But I just don't think we're there yet. So, I guess I'm saying we shelve it till next year.
I agree.
Okay.
I disagree.
Continue to.
I don't agree.
Start to continue to talk in public safety?
Whatever, what other complaints have we had on the beach this summer?
I think, just to, to cut you off, I'm sorry, I think if we don't continue, we're not going to get through the rest of the agenda. We're not going to get to anything else. So, it looks like the discussion needs to continue in public safety. Thanks, Sandy.
Good afternoon.
If I may just speak real quickly on, on that, the, the tent situation and the nuisance behavior. I fully take that on my shoulders. I've been speaking with the captain about it for next year and we, we certainly intend on having more of a presence down there via the, hopefully we'll have a new quad by then. But we certainly expect to have more of a presence down there specifically, not full eight-hour tours up and down the beach, but absolutely more of a presence down there. So, I, I wholeheartedly take that on our shoulders, the enforcement of the nuisance, open alcohol, things of that nature. And I think if we saturate that area a little better on our end, much like the mayor said, once the complaints really started coming in, we send officers down there on a more regular basis. And I think by the captain's account, things kind of got a little better, I think. So, I, in the future, I think our saturation of that area would, would certainly help. Hopefully, that helps with the tent issue as well.
Thank you.
Just my two cents. The monthly report for August 2017 for the police department, there were three hundred and twenty-six motor vehicle stops, seventeen adults were arrested. Various officers, four of them, including myself and the captain, attended several trainings in the month of August. In terms of personnel, officers Dixon and McCouch began the Cape Mac County Police Academy as, as recruits and they're expected to graduate in January of eighteen. The majority of our SLEO twos have left for the season. We do have three that'll continue on until September thirtieth. And then pending your hopeful approval tonight, we'll have two that stay on till the end of the year to supplement the loss of Dixon and McCouch, who were in the academy till January of eighteen. We have three SLEO ones that remain working on a very limited basis based on their school schedule, but we, we do still have three parking personnel. And we have already begun the hiring process for class ones and twos for the summer of eighteen. We started that back in August. So, you know, we're, summer might be over basically, but, you know, we just keep rolling for next year. In terms of building update, we're just in a holding pattern on the, for the bid process. That's, that's all I have.
Why, how long of a holding pattern are we in?
They go out the.
Just waiting for the.
The normal.
October eleventh.
The bids are due when?
October eleventh.
What's our bid date?
October.
Oh, so it's out for bid?
Yeah.
It's out for bid. Yeah, okay.
Yeah. That's what he meant by hold. He's waiting for the bids to come in.
I misunderstood. I'm sorry.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Congratulations on a job well done. First summer as chief. Good work.
That's all we have.
That's all we have. Beach, recreation and tourism. Josie, I'm thinking natural resources, if we move that to the discussion during the council meeting, to give it the time it warrants, because I think we're going to run out of time.
We don't need much more than what.
Okay. Well, if, if it looks like we run out of time. Okay. Beach, recreation, tourism.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, I'd like to reiterate what Sandy said. We thank you for your assistance this summer to make it such a successful summer and yes, one of the busiest that I have been through. So, the numbers show it, one hundred percent. So, just some, this is very lighthearted. So, we're going to end on a fun note for the close of summer. Some fun facts. So, Boot Camp, that we all know well and love and I've never participated in yet, I don't think I ever will, had an all-time high of a hundred and ninety-two participants. So, last year I was floored with a hundred and fifty participants being the max. And then the year before was around closer to a hundred people. So, he has built that program into something pretty special for a hundred and ninety-two people to want to be put through the wringer for an hour, five days a week. It's pretty spectacular. As far as pickleball, we all know that has completely imploded in our area, especially our little town. We are on the map, even in the French Canadian market, we are on the map. As a East Coast, we are rated as one of the top facilities to play in. We had over two hundred and twenty players participate in open play during our ten-week session to when we actually incur, that fee is incurred. And fifty-one people participated in just one beginner session. So, that was a record high of fifty-one people in a matter of two hours that were all beginners. So, that was pretty spectacular to see. So, twenty-four players can only play at a time. So, we just offer that rotation basis. So, when one team is out, the next team comes in. So, pickleball ran smooth and I was thrilled to run some numbers and crunch it. And I've been keeping a pace report since 2013 with the court revenues. And of, of course, since I've started, we've had this goal of building up the tennis court program, and pickleball has certainly been such a big factor in reaching. We now are over, we are $17,000 ahead in revenues from last year. So we were pretty stagnant, yeah. I'm thrilled. So we were pretty stagnant for the past four years, and then this year, we finally had that surge that I was waiting to see. And I attributed that to the added pickleball and tennis tournaments, the diverse tennis clinics, and then adding the fee into the open pickleball play. So I was thrilled with that one. So any rec-related questions?
Just a real quick one question. Are you utilizing the skateboard park for the boot camp? Is that what you're doing?
No, we didn't, just because it was still unsafe, so he was still just using the basketball court. But I'm hoping that we're able just to kind of resurface that for next year. Because once the bike racks go there, we're, we're eating into 20 more feet of that space. And with 192 people, he was maximizing every inch of that surface.
So they could use that space if we just-
They could use that space. We just-
Put a code on it.
Okay, good.
Right.
But you'll have more next year.
Oh, yeah, yes, I assume so.
Good job.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, that's been such a great program. That's our top revenue stream for one of the extraordinary unspecifiable services contract, the private services contract. So moving on to the Arts and Crafts Festival follow-up, here's back in our August workshop. I didn't have the final numbers for you since the payroll was still outstanding, so just in following up with that. We are still in the black, however, we're approximately $7,000 down in revenue from 2016, which I attribute to the efforts of the digital media campaign, which was the $7,000. We launched the social media campaign this past spring. We started May 1. So I was able to effectively gather the data for these ads, because you place newspaper ads, you do direct marketing, you do all these forms of other marketing, but you never know what results that it proves. So with a social media campaign, you're able to track these into, with all the analytics, and measure the conversions of someone actually seeing the ad, just seeing their, if they're actually coming to the event. So with the numbers rundown, 189,000 people were unique visitors who saw the content of the ads that we ran. So these are people that don't already follow the Stone Harbor Facebook, which is, we put Facebook ads on, and then we also did a dark media campaign, so dark ads were also put in there. 3,121 people actually took the next step of clicking through, going through the event site. And then 3,452 actually attended our event because of those ads. So it's really creepy because they can track the people that looked through the ads and then actually came to the, the site. So they were onsite, were able to track their phones. Very scary, very NSA stuff, but it helps me know where our target audience is. So even if they weren't able to visit Stone Harbor on that particular weekend of that event, we made 728,598 impressions. So that was the number of times our content was displayed to X amount of people. So that was the number of impressions. So basically, where I stand now, we're in the regrouping process. So considering the loss that we did take, even though, yes, we're still ahead, it was still $7,000 down last year. So I am researching other comparable shows to see if it justifies an increase in site fees, if we do want the show to continue. So fees haven't been raised since 2015, so we'll just reevaluate and bring it back to committee and see where we stand. So that's Arts and Crafts Festival. So then some fun things we have coming up in the fall. This coming Saturday, September 23rd, The Chamber is hosting their sixth annual Savor September Food, Wine and Beer Festival on 96th Street from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Saturday, October 28th, The Chamber is hosting their Harvest Festival. They moved the week, it was always traditionally the same day as the middle township Harvest Festival. They have now pushed theirs back one week, so not to compete with the townships. So that will be in 96th Street Shopping District from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Saturday, October 28th, Avalon's trunk or tree will happen from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. 30th Street and Beach in Avalon, and Stone Harbor Rock will be there decorating some pumpkins with the kids. And then our annual traditional trick-or-treating will be from Tuesday, on Tuesday, October 31st, along Seven Mile Island. It's from designated times 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. I have updated our website where property owners can go and register their address so that we know they will be home to give the little ones candy. So the rec will deliver decorative pumpkins that the kids have painted to place in their yards, just indicating to the kids and the parents that they are on the route and that they are home and do have candy, so they're not knocking on empty doors. And then in turn, we will designate a route with a corresponding map for parents to pick up so the, with the residents that have already joined the route, so they know which address to follow, or which route to follow with all the addresses. And then our annual island holiday event, so Friday, September 24th, and Saturday, I'm sorry, did I say September? Friday, November 24th, and Saturday, November 25th is our annual island holiday event. And we are keeping the theme for probably one more year, that it's a wonderful life in Stone Harbor. So we're keeping the theme.
Am I dashing again?
I kind of want to, but it's open for discussion.
Okay. And that's Friday morning or Saturday morning? I was getting mixed up. That's Saturday morning?
Saturday morning, but we can, we can change. It's only been two years, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we can change that. So any event questions, any tourism questions?
Real quick. Are, the success rate with having them come to the homes for Halloween, I think last year, you looked into the trunk thing, like Avalon did. Is it better or worth or same?
Well, we did, and this time, it was either this, I think it was the November meeting, that I brought it to everyone's attention to kind of see, engage where we stood with a trunk or treat versus trick-or-treating. And we all decided, give it one more year this year and see how it goes. It's kind of, it's a tough animal, just because now that more people are finding out about it, the kids are a little bit divided, so if you really were to take the route, it would take more than three hours. So they might just hit just Avalon, or they might just hit just Stone Harbor. So there's, depending on who signs up to be part of the route, it could be quite long.
That was determined at a full council meeting.
Right, yeah. So, so, so one more year, and then I'll probably come to you in November, just because I start working on the event calendar, I'm already getting questions for it, the 2018 event calendar for town events. So that's why I came to you so early, trying to decide if we did want to move forward with trick-or-treating or just explore the trick-or-treat options.
Or a combination with Avalon?
Yeah, so that's why we kind of are in cahoots with Avalon. We just wanted to show our support and do pumpkin decorating with the kids. And they are adding, they did hay rides last year, which were a huge, huge success because they did it on the beach. So they've added two trailers this time, so they can have more families enjoy it. So it's only two hours, so the ride was pretty long. It was like 15, 20 minutes, each round. So it was a nice, nice addition for them. Good, thank you.
Any other questions for Miranda? Thank you, Miranda.
Thank you, everyone.
Now, I see there's float dock storage here for discussion. And I'm not quite sure who is going to present for that.
Who would like to present? Jill?
Sure. Last year, well, actually, two years ago, we stopped the storage of the docks due to the dredging. Thank you. And then we said we would revisit that. Once that was finished, the contractor that does the work for the property owners has asked if we are going to do this. He does need to send out his letters to everybody advising them of this. So I wanted to bring this up for discussions so the council could decide, number one, if it is something that you want to continue, and if you do, if you want to revisit the fees on it, and if there's any other requirements in terms of insurance, hold harmless, etcetera. So I'd like to open that up for everybody's thoughts on that.
Just so everybody knows, the dock storage fees collected last year was $13,000.
In 2014, you mean?
Right. In 2000, well, I have in my notes.
Because we didn't do it last year.
I guess it's wrong.
Correct.
Correct, that we did not do-
I was trying to say 2015.
14 and 15.
15 and 16.
15 and 16, we did not do.
Okay, right. This is-
So everybody should have in front of them what was collected in your, our session packet.
Yeah.
Yes.
There's been a number of problems, and this was visited a number of times. I do, I understand that there is a need for this for those homeowners who have these floating docks. However, I'm very much concerned about the individual and his equipment with the stipulations we talked about in the Public Works meeting, where there would be an inspection of the equipment, that our Public Works people would not have to do any cleanup, that except for an emergency, our marina is not used as a workshop for this individual. And that we do have an insurance that specifically names us in a home, hold harmless, in case of, of any situation. I realize that it's a need. So with those things, and definitely an increase in the fees, and I think what we talked about was increasing them to $300. $300. And why is there a difference? There is, there, are they smaller? Do we charge on the size? Or I noticed there were two different fees. Can anyone answer that?
One is 150 and one's 125.
What's the difference between the two? Size?
Per dock or ramp, and the other one says 125 per dock and ramp.
One owner.
I don't know what one owner means.
It's been set up that way for several years. I could never understand it either. You can take that whole section out, as far as I'm concerned, 125 per dock or ramp, one owner. I don't know why that was-
We've just been collecting 150 from everybody?
I don't know, we don't collect anything. Bob collects it. He gives us a, a check for the whole, you know, how many people he puts in there. But I don't know why that was there. I, we looked back and it's been there, and I, I don't know where it came from.
So we don't have a permit for some, for, we don't have a permit for that person to put their dock there?
Yeah, we have to get the permits.
We do.
Oh, we don't charge them?
Excuse me, do you want to ask Mr. Geisler to come up? He might have that answer to that question. If you wouldn't mind, Bob. What's the difference?
This is what he pays us. I don't know.
Okay.
Hello?
Hi, Bob.
They're just 125 a dock. It doesn't matter if it's a small one or a big one.
125, not 150?
No, it's been 125.
It's been the 125.
For years, yes.
That's what you pay us?
That's what I-
Collect.
Collect and then give to you. I, and as far as the hold harmless, I get the permits from you. They sign the permits, I bring them into you, and you laminate them and give them back to me. So, you know.
But I think we need insurance for anyone working on our property.
I, I'm the only one on the property. I have, I have insurance.
And you, it doesn't matter.
Right.
So that there would be insurance that if you damage our property, or if you get hurt on our property, you're covered by your insurance.
I, I don't know if I am covered by the insurance. I have a million-dollar policy. I've been doing it for 42 years without hurting anybody.
And you've never given an insurance, insurance or two?
No, he does.
Oh, yes.
He does.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, I, I do that all the time.
Yeah.
You have to have that to get the contract, excuse me, the contractor's license.
I think we had discussed in committee that we would make sure, moving forward, that whatever insurance is given to us meets all the JIF requirements. So we can look at what we received maybe prior, and Jim can look and see if it's the right coverages.
So then maybe a change, may not.
So go, go back up one step. 150 or 125?
125. As of for the last, I don't know, eight, 10 years, I don't know when it changed.
How did that get decided, that it was 125 instead of 150?
We had talked about raising the rate to 300, because it hasn't been raised in so many years. It's like the utility rates when we first moved into the utility. The accessorial rates hadn't been raised forever, and we were losing money every time we did something.
How many docks are there, Bob?
Approximately 150.
150.
I think, if, if I could just weigh in here, Mr. Geisler, as he said, has done this for, back when ships had sails, he used to do it, but, and he's done mines since 1989. And I think we all agree that the bayfront property owners need this service from-
Absolutely.
-the borough. What, what I would propose, based on time, you know, you, whether they paid 125 or 150, we're going to raise, we already just decided we're going to raise the rates, because they haven't been raised in, in quite some time. So we'll just have to decide what we want to raise it to, so Bob can get his letters out. And then what I would propose is that Bob sit down with Jill and Grant and hammer out the, the method of operation here, you know, as far as like material, what, what are you allowed to do or permitted? I think, I talked to Bob yesterday, and he, he did tell me that you have a place to build new docks.
Oh, yeah, oh, build my dock, yes.
Off-premise.
Offshore.
So if there's some minor, Grant, if there's some minor, you know, he's got to replace two planks on a dock or something, that, I wouldn't think that would be that big of a, an issue. If he, you know, new construction will be some, somewhere else. And then also his, the equipment issues. And that, you know, they can discuss it and figure out what the answers are. And you, Jill can make sure that his insurance meets what the borough requires with JIF. And then we can, we can move forward.
As far as equipment inspection, isn't there state regulations on those inspections now?
No.
Oh, none of that? Okay.
You just have to register it. You don't have to have it inspected.
A forklift?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It's interesting.
Yeah, there are no inspections, because it's just, it's construction equipment.
Okay.
It's not like a, a vehicle or things like that.
But the forklift, forklift will not be on that property?
No.
Yeah. Right. No, no equipment will be stored.
Well, when I'm working.
Yeah.
The forklift will-
Well, leave it there.
The forklift will have to come on our marina?
Excuse me?
That's how he brings it.
That's how he brings them.
That's how he brings them.
Yeah.
Drives them to the ramp.
For, for the last two years, we've taken each dock and delivered it to the house from Angelo's house all the way up and down, you know, sideways, on the highway, down the street. So that, the last two years have been a real big problem for me. Took me two and a half months instead of three weeks. Where now, all we do is go from the boat ramp, up the hill, set them down. So, you know, most of the danger was the last two years, both directions, and no incidents.
Do you want to set the rates here tonight?
Do you want to, do you want to go to A and F to set rates? Where do you want to, how do you want to go about setting these rates? Or do you guys want to agree tonight on how to set the rate, on the permits?
Do you have any idea about other beach communities and what they charge for these, this service?
I don't even know of other people take the docks out.
Right.
We only take the docks out along the channel. You know, everybody leaves their docks in in the basins. It's just the ones that were most likely to get damaged. But I don't know of any other towns that do it. I don't go to many other towns.
I contacted Avalon. They don't have anything like this at all.
No.
I, I think if you went, if you went 100%, if you went to 250, I don't think, I don't think, oh, God, I guess I shouldn't say this, I don't think there's going to be anybody squawking about it, because, like I said in the committee, you know, they'll be so glad to get them out of their driveways that 250 to store the dock for the winter is not exorbitant.
I think one of the concerns at the, at the meeting was the ordinance reads from November 15th until April 15th. But already, there's, you're taking them out, is that correct?
No, I had taken two out.
No?
That we had permit, before the dredging, that had happened three years in a row, that people leave. And they had rented a, a boat trailer slip, and they, they didn't want it to get damaged. So they had me put their dock on their B-12, their boat slip, their trailer area in the parking lot. And they got permission three years to do that, and then we had the dredging, and I did that this year. He said, "Oh, I've already checked with this three years. It shouldn't be any problem." So I put it there.
Who's floating dock?
Check with you?
Who's floating dock is down there now?
That's the borough's.
Okay.
So you don't intend-
He removed the other.
You don't intend to start until November 15th?
It ties into the trailer removal, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
So you can't, you gotta get the trailers out there before the docks come in. Well, I don't think, you're asking to change that, are you?
No.
No, no.
Oh, good.
Same as, but actually, Greg Sheeran had it. I said, I, I thought it was November 15th for all these years. That's my birthday. And he said, "No, it's November 1st." Bill Hoy changed that. And he looked it up, and he won, so I owed him a soda.
Well, the ordinance reads the 15th.
November 15th.
Yeah, well, see, um-
So you won. So you won.
No, no, well, he said, he showed it to me. No, no, well, he said, he showed it to me, that it was actually November.
The special book.
That actually was November first.
Special book.
Could we just do a consensus to move this along, since it's a necessary thing that has to be done? If Jill will set up the, the meeting that we talked about and get that squared away so that everything is fine-tuned? And do we all agree, then two hundred and fifty for the fee?
That's reasonable.
That's fine.
Doesn't have to go back to another committee?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Just so the requirements for JIF are met.
Do you know why it was ever written a hundred and twenty-five per dock or ramp, one owner?
I, I don't know why that would be.
No, taking that out.
Some owners have six docks.
So it, it will be two fifty per dock or ramp?
No, not or ramp. It's either, it's, some, some of the ramps come on top of the floating docks. Some of them don't have a ramp to begin with. So it was just per floating dock. The, the ramp, sometimes some of them have them and some don't.
Okay, so the rate would just say two fifty per floating dock?
Yes. And whether it has a ramp on it or not, it doesn't make too much of a difference.
Okay.
So the ramp, we don't pay, you don't charge them for the ramp?
Well, you don't, you don't store somebody's just the ramp there.
The ramp goes on top of the dock.
Yeah, sometimes you lift the ramp and put a board across. So some years, you might take the floating dock and not the ramp. But basically, it's, you're paying for the floating dock.
So we're not charging for ramps?
There's anything in the ordinance.
Is it a dock and a ramp?
Dock and a ramp, if you want. Or, or a dock without a ramp, it would still be the same.
Same price?
Yeah.
Just, I'm just going to say two fifty per floating dock.
Yeah. Anybody disagree on the fee?
So, I'm sorry.
If anybody disagrees on that fee?
I think that's a good fee. I think, so basically, each homeowner gets their own permit. So we know whose docks are there. And you basically collect the money.
Yes, I send that with my bill.
Your bill is over and above that, and that's, that's your problem.
Does the permit state, it will state now a hundred and twenty-five dollars on the permit?
Two hundred and...
Two fifty.
I mean, two fifty. It will state that on the permit, starting this year.
Now, if I can say one thing, like, there's some people that have three, four docks, even six docks. We went from seventy-five to a hundred, to a hundred and twenty-five. Now we're more than doubling. Well, I guess we are exactly doubling.
This would be per dock?
Yeah.
I mean, if they have six docks, then it's six times two hundred and fifty.
Right, oh, I understand that. I'm just saying, it's a pretty big jump.
But it hasn't been increased in a number of years.
Thirty, forty?
Oh, no, no.
Years?
No, 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 no.
Ten?
Not that long. Maybe ten.
Ten?
But it went from one hundred to one twenty-five.
So you're saying, where's the increment?
Yeah, yeah, a little bit.
We're saying there isn't one.
It's a service no other communities provide.
Seventy-five, seventy-five to a hundred, to a hundred and twenty-five, to two fifty.
Yeah. Yeah. We raised it for the last two years. You just weren't using it.
I get it, I get it. Just throwing my two cents.
Thanks, Bob.
So we're going to go two fifty, so he, so Bob can send out his letters to his customers?
Well, he's got to meet with you first. And get everything ironed out.
You're going to meet with Jill?
Yep.
Iron out the...
If that's what you guys decided, yes, that's what I'll, I'll put in there.
I'll, I'll do a resolution for the next meeting with just this fee.
Yes.
So that it covers him.
Okay.
That'll be in October.
Covers us.
And, uh...
They don't, can't go in there till November anyway.
Right.
One more quick question, which might happen when we raise the fee. What about the people that had, you know, for the last two years have been putting it in their yard? And, and now we, we say, okay, well, instead of being a hundred and twenty-five, you have six docks at two hundred and fifty. The guy's going to say, hey, could you just put it in my yard?
Do we have an ordinance against that?
I don't think we have an ordinance that prohibits them from being in the yard, correct?
It's very unsightly if they do.
So I guess if that's what they want to do.
I think I understand what Bob's saying.
Who can put six docks in our driveway? I want to see that driveway.
Well, you stack them up on top of one another.
That's not safe.
Well, nobody, that's what's happened the last two years.
Well, I know that, but I don't, I can't imagine anybody would, would want that.
A double driveway with narrow slips. So it's just, it's just stacked two, two, two.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, no, I'm, I'm addressing it.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
Because when I send the letter out, people might say, hey, just put it in the driveway like you did the last two years.
Just tell them, you don't do that anymore. You can't drive on the streets up and down with your forklift.
Right.
Well, I, I have some docks that I don't store at the property that have been doing this for the last twenty-five years, that do have stored them on their own property. You know, there's...
So not everybody's using the marina.
Not everybody's using...
They never have.
They never have.
All right, so I would think that that's just business as usual, correct?
Yep.
Well, I know, I, I, and this is just my personal opinion. I would not appreciate neighbors storing, it's not a pleasant thing.
Right.
You know, so to save a few hundred hours to have your dock in the driveway is not very good for the neighbors, you know?
Right.
I don't know what the answer to that is. I don't know what...
The only thing you could do is prohibit it.
That's the answer would be an ordinance that prohibits it.
On your property.
You know, as long as we're providing them a space to store them, then they shouldn't have to put them on there.
Right, but...
But there's a fee involved, right? That's correct.
The ones that happen for the last, you know, twenty-five years. Now, I just want to try to head off a potential problem. People say, oh, that's a lot of money, just put it in my yard. So just something to think about.